It's Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a regular meeting of the Weston Board of Education. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before we get started, I just wanted to make a few comments ahead of the meeting. First of all, thank you for everyone that's here on a date, on a night like this. It's not one of the nicer nights, so thank you for coming out. I want to point out a couple of things. Later in, in, in the meeting, we're going to have a presentation on safety and security. We've appointed a Safety and Security Committee, which many of you have asked for. Michael Guido will be the chairman of that, and the other members are David Felton and myself. Later on, you'll learn that we have hired a new Director of Security. Lisa, Michael, and others will go into that in greater detail. He's a very experienced police officer from the city of Fairfield, where he's now retiring. A lieutenant on the police, on the police force in, in Fairfield, where he oversaw during his career, school safety. So we'll learn a lot more about that, and there's a presentation here, then there's copies of it at the table for anyone who would like to have a copy of that. And then we have an announcement to make. We have a new doctor in the house. It's Dr. Tracy Edwards, who received her PhD. So now we have two doctors. You're both wearing pink, you know, in one form or another. Congrat-- maybe that, maybe, maybe that's just, you know, there you go. Phil, when you start wearing pink, then we'll be all set, okay? Oh, Dan, I'm sorry. My God, I feel bad. I'm, you know, so, thank you. So, so that's terrific, Tracy. Congratulations. So the next item on the agenda is our Student Board of Education Representative's Comments.
Hi, everyone. If you don't know me, I'm Jen Sharman. I'm one of the executive presidents for the high school. My co-resident, Emily Krieger, couldn't be at this meeting, but I'm just going to give a couple of updates on some things that we've been up to recently, because the high schools had a busy couple of months. So we, on November twenty-first, we had an assembly called "We've Been Sneaking Into Your Brains" by a guest speaker named Max Stossel. The assembly was kind of an interesting dive into why we so easily become addicted to our devices and encourage students to disconnect and find healthier ways of using technology. Additionally, a few student government leaders and a couple athletic leaders attended the CAS-CIAC field trip. It was a leadership conference held at Southern Connecticut State University last Friday. Each student government member attended various breakout rooms, ranging on topics from igniting school spirit to mental health in schools. And the goal was really to bring back ideas for the high school, which we certainly did and are excited to implement. And we had one of our captains, as well as our athletic director, Mr. Berkowitz, also attend the conference to present on captain's circle. This week marks the beginning of our English department's Film Fest. This year's movie is "The Secret Life of Walter Mitty", and students are having a lot of fun analyzing film and getting to watch film during class. Last week was our Week of Winter Concerts for the Weston Music Department. So bands started us off, and then the orchestra and choir concerts followed after. All the concerts were wonderful, and we always love to hear what the music department is up to. Last Thursday, we had a group of educators from our sister school in China come to visit and get a sense of Weston High School, as well as Weston Public Schools as a whole. And on the high school, we received them with a warm welcome in the library, where Superintendent Barbiero and Ms. Canada presented. And then students from student government, as well as the Chinese National Honor Society, gave them tours of the school and had lunch with them in the cafeteria. This upcoming week is our annual pre-winter break Spirit Week. We kick things off today with Denim Day. Tomorrow's going to be Flannel Day. Wednesday will be White Out. Thursday will be Ugly Sweaters or Festive Hats, and Friday will be Pyjama Day. And then we're holding an ugly sweater contest, so the winners will get a holiday gift bag. And we're excited to see the spirit that is to come. And then, lastly, this Friday is our X Period Day. So every year before winter break, we hold an X Period, which is where students are able to sign up for various activities, ranging from karaoke to coloring. And for an hour on Friday, students will get to do these activities. And X Period is really just a fun and relaxing way to lead us into winter break. Yeah, that's pretty much everything the high school's been up to. Let me know if I can answer any questions about that.
Any questions? Very busy.
Yes.
When do you have time to go to school?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you for holding me.
No, thank you, and enjoy the holidays. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the, is Approval of the Minutes. There are three. It's Approval of the Meeting Minutes from the November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four Weston Board of Education Special Meeting. Are there any changes that anyone would like to see? Would someone like a motion to approve?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approved the November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item is Approval of the Meeting Minutes from November eighteen, from the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Weston Board of Education Meeting. Any changes or comments? May I have a motion to approve?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approved the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And lastly, Approval of the Meeting Minutes from the December second, two thousand and twenty-four Weston Board of Education Special Meeting. Any changes or comments? May I have a motion to approve, please?
Move that the motion, move that the Weston Board of Education approved the December second, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, item number five, is Public Comment. And is, as, and we read a statement before, before each public comment section of the, of our meeting. "The Board welcomes the opportunity to hear from members of the public about matters concerning Weston Public Schools. Public comment is an important chance for the Board to receive input and feedback from our school community. We listen attentively to all comments shared. While we value and pay, pay close attention to public comment, it is our practice not to respond substantively, or sometimes at all, during public comment. There are several reasons for this. First, engaging in a discussion on non-agenda items could violate the Board's obligations to comply with the Freedom of Information Act. Second, the Board or the administration may not be prepared to discuss certain matters raised in the first instance by a public comment. Third, the Board develops its meeting agenda carefully to ensure that the Board addresses matters that are pressing or relevant at the time of the meeting. We encourage members of the public with specific questions, concerns, or complaints about our schools to reach out directly to Superintendent Barbiero. You may also email the Board at our email address, boardofeducation@westernps.org. And additional details and public comments at Board meetings can be found on our website, www.westernps.org, as well as meeting conduct and bylaws of the Board on Board Book. Public, it's a very long number, but if you're interested in meeting conduct, it's, it's in Board Book." Would anyone like to address the Board? And Jody, would you read the rules of the road? Thank you.
Hi, you have five minutes to speak. Please state your full name and just your street address.
Sure, it's Amy Klimic, thirty Joanne Lane.
Excuse my phone, I'm obviously reading from my notes. Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent. I'd like to thank everyone for the great strides in school security that have been made over the past two years. However, I kindly ask for the BOE and the Superintendent to provide updates and anticipated implementation dates on the following security initiatives: the panic buttons, the auto-locking doors, and the ballistic-proof partitions for our security guards. There has also been a lot of discussion regarding a third-party external audit. Would the BOE, Chief of Police, or Superintendent kindly provide any rationale behind the community-perceived hesitation to performing this audit? With the retirement of Captain Bordacki, who was admittedly our in-house expert, it seems like a prudent discussion to have and explore this option further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Kate Green. I'm the mother of Owen Green, a third grader, and Arlo Green, a second grader. I'm here tonight to--
Have your address, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm at twenty-eight Davis Hill Road in Weston, Connecticut. And I'm, I'm speaking a little bit off the cuff, but want to thank the members that have proposed this Safety Committee and looking forward to hearing more about that later tonight. It does fall towards the end of the meeting agenda, and safety and security of our students, obviously, is a primary concern of the community here in Weston. So I wanted to ask if you would consider, in the future Board meetings, if we could move that up a little bit closer to the top of the agenda? The second item is, I think you're going to be speaking about a new appointment around safety and security, and if you could talk a little bit, potentially at that time, about whether there's going to be KPIs around the new hire and the subgroup that's working together to determine whether or not a third-party audit would be helpful, because so many members of the community feel that it would be extremely helpful to have a third-party audit. And obviously, we would need an RFP process and all of that to start commencing as soon as possible in order to appoint an outside group to support all the work that everyone is doing here and complement and hopefully enhance the work. So I know that you guys might not be ready to talk about that at this meeting, but if you could please report back to the public about the specific KPIs on who is accountable within this group on that, and more about, you know, steps in timing for this third-party group to come in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Christina Coether at sixty-four Steep Hill. I would like to take a moment to reflect on some principles that guide us as a community, particularly as we come together to support our children in their education. Volunteering for a position like serving on the Board of Education is undoubtedly a significant commitment. It is an act of service rooted in the desire to give back and make a positive impact. For this, I express my sincere gratitude. With this service comes great responsibility to listen, to engage, and to act in the best interests of those you serve. Ethics are the cornerstone of public service. They call for transparency, open communication, and a willingness to be held accountable. Failure to respond to repeated outreach from parents and those, and those directly affected by your decisions is not aligned with these principles. While no one expects perfection, one should expect acknowledgement, dialogue, and a shared goal of finding solutions. Criticism, when offered constructively, is an essential tool for growth and improvement. Dismissing concerned parents, commenting about them on Facebook, when you've neglected to respond to the calls and emails, or calling these parents keyboard cowboys in public forums does a disservice to the trust we place in you as our representatives. It silences voices that should be heard and undermines the foundation of our partnership. Accountability is not just a duty, it's a promise. It's a promise that those who serve will remain connected to the community they represent, will respond to its concerns, and will work tirelessly to build trust through action and conversation. The protocol for community engagement with the Board of Ed is problematic. As parents, we have two options: email you or comment at the beginning of a meeting. Neither is likely to get a response. Beyond that, you can and did vote at the last meeting, three to three, to silence two parents who wish to speak about the safety of the children in this district. To allow a vote to silence concerned parents is beyond comprehension. It is unethical, and it is a failure of your duties to represent the people who voted you into your position. I ask the Committee on Communication to please revise the SOP for discourse with the community you all are tasked to represent. I would like to express my appreciation for the time Superintendent Barbiero made to speak with me, as well as Board of Ed members David Felton and Mike Guido. I am here because I care deeply about my children's safety, their education, and the strength of this school district. I ask that this Board and the Chair reflect on your responsibility to foster not just policies, but relationships built on respect, responsiveness, and shared purpose. I look forward to your discussion and comments on the security update this evening, and thank you for the creation of the Committee on School Security. I reviewed the presentation already and have a few specific questions. One, in the absence of school, our school security expert, Captain Bordacki, who retired, and Mr. Rios, who are the school security experts you are consulting with in their absence? Two, the timeline of district initiatives appears impressive in the deck, but this information is in a vacuum. How do we stack up compared to our peer districts? And three, why are there still, is there still no immediate push for an outside audit? Wouldn't it be ideal to hand over the findings of an audit to Mr. Wiltsey day one, instead of letting another school year go by? Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you. Let's move on to old business. The next item is the Discussion and Approval of the Non-Lapsing Account. Phil, why don't you and I take this? So I, I think, we've talked about this in the past. The, the state has approved Boards of Education to create a non-lapsing account. And a non-lapsing account is essentially, if there's a surplus left over at the end of a, at the end of a fiscal year, that money can be, that money can remain with, with the Board of Educa, with the Board of Education. The Board of Finance has, for as long as Phil's been here, and Phil's been asking for the creation of a non-lapsing account, which would require the Board of Education approval to create a non-lapsing account, and the Board of Education has not, has not granted that. Pardon me? Board of Finance, I'm sorry. The Board of Finance has not granted that. And, and I was on the Board of Finance, and I, I voted against it as well. But with this new, with this new approval by the state, we could create a non-lapsing account. However, the Board of Finance would rather we not do it, and they would like us to return any surplus to the town at the end of a fiscal year. We're going to have a surplus this year in round numbers of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We've outlined to, to the Board, to the Chairman of the Board and to the Board last week, that we have unexpected expenditures that could not be budgeted for around security, around sped, and around the search for a new Superintendent to replace Lisa after she retires after forty years. And we have agreed, subject to the Board's approval, that we will return two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that five hundred and ninety thousand dollars back to the town. We'll retain the balance. We'll be absolutely transparent with the Board of Finance how those monies are going to be spent. And the Board of Finance would like an understanding that in the future, if we have a surplus, that we will return it, subject to any potential needs that come up during the year that are outside of a normal budgeting process, that we will return those monies to the town. So we need an approval by the Board to return-- Sorry?
It's two parts. We first need an approval off by the Board to establish the non-lapsing--
Non-lapsing account, right.
And then to fund the non-lapsing account.
Right. So we would fund the non-lapsing account with two hundred and--
Net three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
What's the exact number?
Thank you.
Three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. That's the, that's the first item that we need an approval for.
I'll ask a question. So the purpose I thought of the non-lapsing account was that we would be able to maintain funds for unforeseen expenses. But if we're turning it back over to the town at the end of the year, isn't that what we would generally do anyway? And if that's the case, is there still a need for a non-lapsing account?
Well, we have, we have, we have a need for the balance difference between two ninety and two thirty.
Right. The expenditures are listed here. There's no--
Right, right, right. But if, if we were to turn the full amount over to the town, and we, we just turn around and ask them for it back in the form of a special appropriation. There's a cap on special appropriations. It's two percent of the overall budget of the town.
Right.
So procedurally, yes, we could return it. Then we'd ask for it back, because we have a need for it. And that would eat into the town's ability for special appropriation. So this is a more simplistic way of, of not having to do that.
Right. But so that means that every year, the non-lapsing account, the balance will go back down to zero, and we return the unused funds to the town, correct?
Correct. So assuming, assuming that we do spend the full amount and establish the non-lapsing account, if there is a balance at the end of that year, those funds will be returned to the town. And also, I think, for each year that there is a surplus, there would need to be an approval, so to speak, to establish a new account.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering why, I mean, so we would have to have this vote every single year, then, for the non-lapsing?
Correct. Just to fund it.
So how does this really differentiate from what we're doing currently with the town? Because from my understanding, what we're doing with the town now is whatever surplus we have left over, we hand over to the town, and then we're having to ask for special appropriation. Or are we able to take, because I think at one point in time, we had a surplus, and David, you came up with the idea of funding some of the new curriculum materials that we were going to need from the additional funds that we had left over from our surplus. So I guess I'm asking, is it necessary to do the non-lapsing? I thought the non-lapsing was going to be something we were going to hold kind of as a rainy day fund, with a perhaps top limit to it? But that's, but that's not happening, though, if we end up emptying it out every year?
No, 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 no. So I think we're talking about several different things.
Okay. Help me understand.
So with the non-lapse, so at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, we had a balance. So what we're saying is that with that balance that we have, we'd hold that in reserve. And if we have unanticipated expenditures, then we will draw from that account. The other process that we have in place currently is that we would not have a reserve account. We would have to go to the Board of Finance and request a special appropriation. So that's really the main difference. The main difference is that right now, those money will be in a reserve account for the Board of Education. As of right now, the Board of Education does not have a reserve account with the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand. But I mean, so are we, and this is total ignorance on this one. So we are, the money that's going into the non-lapsing account is coming from the unspent money from twenty-three, twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay. That, that clarifies. Sorry.
I have a quick question as well. So why are we returning any money to the town? And I say that with two hats on. I've been, as a taxpayer, I, I've been taxed that money for the schools. So why wouldn't I want that money to stay with the Board of Education? And when we do our budget for next year, whatever the amount is that's in that non-lapsing account, whatever the surplus was, the unused money, it just reduces the amount that we tax the community on. So the question is, why return any of it? And at most, twenty cents on every dollar, if you really want to, you know--
Goodwill. I mean, literally goodwill. I mean, you're, what you're saying makes all the sense in the world of, we have a budget of a million dollars and a, and a two hundred and thirty, let's assume it's two thirty. We'd say, well, we'll just reduce our budget. If we don't return it, and we keep it, they'll reduce our budget by that amount.
Right.
So this is more of a--
Okay.
Be a good guy type thing.
Did we float the idea that we just use it to reduce our future budget?
I think we have always floated that idea, and has not, never been accepted. To be honest, I think, Steve, I think it's safe to say that--
To be honest, I think, Steve, I think it's safe to say that the Board still does not, I think, in general, agree that we should have a reserve account. They do believe that all funds, should this be returned to the town, and we continue with the practice currently in place.
And we can revisit this. This is obviously the first year we're doing it. So next year, we can say, we want to tweak it a bit.
Exactly. If I may. I mean, what this does right here is just, it establishes a non-lapsing account, and when we went a couple months ago to the Board of Finance, they didn't want us to do that. But there was some discussion about, well, if you do that, would you give us back the money that we gave you in the special appropriation this first year? Right, Phil? So we said, well, we certainly would bring that up for consideration, because in good faith, and over the years, they have supported us with special appropriations. But it just ties us to this year, and they don't have to be voted on every year.
And just, just for the record, we do not plan our budget anticipating a surplus. Every year is different. For the past several years, we have had significant surpluses, and I think we have outlined what has been the main drivers for those surpluses. So again, just for the record, we are not planning, and we have not, and will never plan our budget to have a surplus at the end of the fiscal year.
I may just add, David, I think the expiration date, which is what Sharon had asked, is June 30th, 2025. The ATBM is April 4th or 5th, 2025. So there's like a slight disconnect between when the Board of Finance and the town approves the budget to set the mill rate, and then when we would know if we've used, for example, the appropriate amount for security upgrades. That could happen between April 4th and June 30th, right? And then, now you've twisted the calculation a little bit, because you have to go back to the Board of Finance resetting our budget, and there has to be a new vote. I don't know if that's the process, but you could see there's a slight disconnect in dates.
Yeah, but if there was money in the account, we did it last year. We had the surplus, which I 100% agree with you. It's mostly because of unfilled positions, which is not something we should be banking on. But last year, we had that money, and I think it was in June, we determined right before the end of the budget, we can, or the year before, we can pre-buy books. And the difference was the amount that, the actual amount that we asked the community to fund. But either which way, I think this is a great start.
Yes.
Other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the creation of a non-lapsing account? The total amount of the surplus is approximately $597,000. The Board of Education will return $230,000 to the town of Weston, and the balance of $367,000 will go to fund the new non-lapsing account.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, that's it, isn't it, Phil? We don't need to do anything beyond that?
That's it.
Yeah, okay, great. The next, it's a discussion and approval of the district educational model.
Yes, if I may. This was talked about at the November 11th meeting, I believe, when we spoke specifically about that the administrative team recommends to the Board of Education the four-school model and the current grade configurations. It's the idea of what the district educational model should look like. It doesn't commit us to renovate as new, not any of that. It's just the principle that we believe strongly, the administrative team, that we have the school size and the school grade configuration correct, and we just wanted it formally discussed and approved.
I have a quick question. Sorry. The four-school configuration, I agree with, but when we look at the configuration, we currently have administration in the portables. What is the thought process on that?
You know, that really doesn't have to be a part of this. We're sort of using our partners with Colliers, who, and Peter will talk a little bit about that in his report at the end, their guidance here as these owners reps. What happens to, I mean, I think that the group in the annex would love to stay there for the next several years, if not more, but that, that won't factor in, again, the specifics of it. We're just talking about the actual educational model. As I said, when I first came here in 1985, central office was at the North House and the elementary school. So I would venture to say that it is not uncommon here. I think it's been in every building but the intermediate school, right, Patty? I remember when it was in the middle school, so most likely, yeah, that's what will happen.
Okay. All right.
I just want to make the comment that I have concerns that this is locking us into four buildings before we have understood enrollment, before we have really heard from Colliers. And it was my understanding that one of the roles of the EOC was to look at optimizing the classrooms within the buildings, because the FOC looked at the physical buildings. I have not seen any report from the EOC about actual...
I was just looking.
Oh, he's treating me like, it's right there. I haven't seen anything from the EOC that talks about optimal grade configurations within a building. So I feel like this is, it's premature, and it's prejudging.
Well, I would say to you, I think on November 11th, the administrative team presented its case after we had gone to the faculty, we had met with small groups. It wasn't, I mean, the EOC is basically how many? Four people. But this was the recommendation from the faculties of the buildings, as well as collectively all the experience of the administrative team. And the next step in this overall process of looking at what happens with our school district is to determine what the educational model is. So I would respectfully say, this is what we believe very strongly in, with our 150 years of educational expertise in educational leadership. You certainly are, you know, you can vote how you wish, but this is what we recommend, and we do not believe it is premature. We believe that we have a solid plan here with these grade configurations. And we talked at length on November 11th about the why behind why we need a 6'8" middle school, not a 5'8", not a 4'8", heaven forbid, why we wanted that pre-K2, which sets us apart, quite frankly, in Fairfield County as an early learning center specifically for pre-K2, and the 3'5" focus on reading to learn. I got that right, right? All of that. So, you know, we're moving this forward as part of the overall process, this vote.
So then, just to clarify, one of the questions I had asked Colliers, which I think that they, are they here tonight?
No, they are not here.
Okay.
No, they, we were not planning on seeing them. Next month will probably be, as you know, you voted to have them get free proposals, and that's where we're at right now. You know, we all agree that something has to be done with this building that we're in, and they're working on getting the proposals, which we will bring to you next month.
All right. So one of the questions I had asked Colliers is, can we do a school within a school? So I'm not, I agree 100% with the classroom sizes, the smaller schools, the way the kids as a group are. But one of the things I asked him was for the flexibility, and because of the changing enrollment, could you do a school within a school? And so my, so how, so let's just say that we were really interested in actually running it to the ground, whether it came out as something that is doable or something that wasn't doable. If we vote tonight on four buildings, and we look at really, can we renovate the middle schools, so that you've got essentially two schools operating within one building where they're separated? How does tonight's vote for four buildings potentially affect the ability to operate two schools within a physical single structure?
I think there was a concern expressed by the administrative team about that idea. When you talk about a school within a school, for example, this building here used to have four through eight. Four through eight was here. Every day, it was about operations. It wasn't about learning. I lived it. There was, there are so many challenges with putting those grade configurations together, from fourth to eighth grade, from putting fourth graders on the bus with eighth graders, to running the different schedules, the lunches, the cafeterias. I, I don't want to speak for Colliers. Could it be done? Well, we did it once before. Is that the educational standard that we're hoping to be here with our, the vision of the district? Our team would say no. It's not. But again, it's a town decision, it's a board decision. We would push for four schools to maintain the configuration. So you can choose to vote, postpone the vote, whatever you want to do, but...
No, look, ultimately, it's the town's decision. And we also have not heard from the Board of Finance as to what the town's bonding capacity is. But subject to that, subject to that, we're being asked to approve a four-building campus in the configuration of, that we've been discussing. That can all be thrown to the wayside if the Board of Finance says no, and you don't have enough capital to do it, and/or the town says no, and then you go back to the drawing board.
But can I, I'm a little concerned in that if we vote for four buildings, we limit our options. And we don't, we, at this time, we don't know what Colliers is putting forth, or the Board of Finance is putting forth, and it's going to limit our options and what we can do. This WIS wasn't built until, what, 2008? And the law, it was being built because the largest class was in 2008. It had 267 students, and that class was never in WIS. So the school district was able to provide a pretty good quality of education. They were number, you know, one in the state at that time with three buildings. So I think we should continue to keep the option open until where we hear from everyone, and these are very important aspects of, of the vision and the thinking that we're going to vote on.
If I ca, if I may, the responsibility of the Board of Education is to decide the educational model. It is not the funding of the model. The funding of the model is done by other boards. What we are asking you to do is to recognize and determine whether you agree with the administrative team's recommendation that there be four schools, that the grade configurations be pre-K2, 3'5", 6'8", 9'12", because that is what we believe is best for the education, the learning and the development, the social-emotional development of these children on this campus. It is not about how much this one will cost, or that, that, and it was, Colliers had stated this, perhaps we didn't clarify it as much. It's about the educational model. It's not about the funding. It's not about the what-if-this and what-if-that. That will all come later if the town cannot fund it. But what it's about is, is what is the best educational experience for our children now? And you can postpone it. A lot of things have been postponed here. I've been here 40 years. A lot of things have been postponed. Our buildings are in terrible shape. They've been postponed. So I would just urge you to kind of come to grips with what the best educational model is for Weston. And if the town can't afford certain options of this and that, then that comes out later. But at some point, and it was our administrative team's responsibility, to come forward and to state what we believe, to maintain the personalization that we hope for our children, our schools of this size. I certainly do not want to go back to an elementary school of 900 students. Patty and I lived it. I don't want to go back to grade configurations in this building. I can't even imagine. But that's really the next step here. And again, the money and all that, it doesn't hold you to that. It holds you to the responsibility of what is the best teaching and learning for our children. And as I said, I've been here a long time. This is it. And the time has come. I'm leaving, but the time has come to draw the line in the sand and say, this is what we think is best for Weston students. They can't afford it, then we figure something out. But at some point, and this is the board that has to do it, the board has to say that this is the best way to educate our kids. I mean, we've known since November. You want to postpone it again? You can. I just strongly urge you not to.
We need to make at least what we think the best educational decision is. And then, to Lisa's point, and to my point earlier, we'll present that to the town. Colliers will come up with their, you know, their recommendations, and it'll be put forward, and the town, the Board of Finance and the town will determine whether or not we, it can be funded in that manner.
But just one clarification. Colliers doesn't come up with the recommendations.
No, they follow our recommendations.
Exactly. Colliers said to us point-blank, this board has to decide what's the educational model. The whole thing about the funding and the renovate is new, and maybe there are possibilities here, that comes later. They're working with us to get a sense of what can be done with this school. But overall, if we don't agree, or you don't agree, on what the best number of schools in the configuration are, then I would respectfully say that we are, there's going to be more delays, which, you know, I would not recommend.
Well, we can't delay in the near term what our grade configuration is, because we have a budget due in six weeks. Right? So we at least have to agree that this is how we're moving forward in the next six weeks. But for the next four to six...
But we know that.
I know we know that, but...
The size of schools.
Right. The point is that that's our baseline. Right? And then we can decide, if we deviate from the baseline, we have, you know, we have to utilize our time prudently to deviate from that.
You know, it's up to you if you want to vote tonight or you want to postpone.
No, no, I'd rather vote tonight. We've postponed, we've postponed this decision for, how long? Years? Ultimately, have to put a stake in the ground and say, we want four schools, this grade configuration, present it to the town, and let the town decide. Any other, Michael, you want to say something?
No, I was just thinking through this. You know, if the facts did change and we had to revisit this, I just want to make sure this vote doesn't necessarily, and it may, it may very well, look, I may very well agree with, let's say, you know, the four schools and the configuration. I do want to maintain some optionality. So if we do vote on this, and we do vote to, you know, support the four schools tonight, does that lock us in from entertaining any other options should facts on the ground change later on? Let's say with, with respect to the Board of Finance, the town, et cetera? I just want to make sure we...
Well, I would say it would have to, correct?
Yeah.
You know, like, we are not clear what they are going to say about this building here.
Yep.
And so they would have to. If you say you want four schools, and then they said, well, we can't afford this option, that option, or that option, then, you know, this right now is kind of the vision, right? This is what we really believe in. There has to be, I mean, you know, you can want something, but if it doesn't get funded, you can't do it. So I don't, that's where I don't want you to think that, yeah, can't, how can we lock us in if we can't get the money, for example? Right? That's, that's a reality also. So, yeah.
Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Steve, I'll make a comment quickly, actually. I don't, I think we have multiple challenging decisions. I don't think this is particularly one, actually. And I make that point because a year ago, we had to slow-roll everything because there was concern about the price, which I understand. So we've taken a bunch of steps back. Each time we take a step back, we say essentially, like, well, wait, we're moving quickly, we have to reassess, we have to reexamine this. To Lisa's point, all we're doing right now is saying, based on what we can see, this is the wisest way to educate the children in this community. Now, at a certain point, we have to take the administration's suggestion to that, given that everything else in terms of enrollment, in terms of cost, all that is a moving target based on other conversations. I think you're right, Steve. I think we do have to put a stake in the ground and make a vote on this. And I think if we continually back some and say, well, wait, we should consider this, consider this, consider this, soon we're going to be 30 years behind again. There's a bunch of things from all these reports we're looking at, which are going to be pretty clear, meaning this building's in trouble, meaning four schools is probably best, and the sort of finances of this whole thing is going to be a mess, for sure. But I think this vote itself, we should definitely do, and I think it's a fairly, fairly easy logic puzzle to go through, which is, the administration has a strong opinion about how to educate our students. I think it's worth listening to.
I'm going to make the motion.
That's what I figured.
Okay. We've, that the Weston Board of Education confirmed that desired grade configuration number of schools for the district education... of schools for the district educational model be, will be the current grade configuration, pre-K2, grades three through five, grades six through eight, and grades nine through 12, with four schools.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Can we have a vote by voice, please? Peter?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Michael?
A vote of aye.
David?
I'm going to abstain. I don't think we have enough information.
Okay. Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes six, six ayes and one abstention. Thank you. The next item is.
We have two very.
What?
We have two very quick policies that I think we can get to very quickly, and then move on to the highlight of this evening, which is the security presentation. Yeah. It's the second read of the graduation requirements. We talked about this at length at the Policy Committee that both Sharon and Michael were at, you were there too, I believe, right? Mr. Ezzies? So, I don't know if anyone has any questions. It's basically going with the state law of requiring personal finance and cleaning up some things. So, if there's no questions.
Just my one question. My, this bugaboo that I have on this accepting partisan Palocha activities under community service. Is that something that we're doing with this?
Is that still in there?
It's not in there.
Correct. We currently provide community service credit based on our outline and framework in the Weston High School Program of Studies, based on independent coursework, independent studies. And we have the ability to determine internally whether or not a community service hour or experience meets the standard for community service credit internally. So, that is just a transparent statement within our policy that basically clarifies and reconfirms what we already do in the district, which is to provide community service credits for students up to a .5 elective credit, based on the guidelines that are currently outlined in the Weston Program of Studies.
Okay. Because I know that there was additional language that was potentially, potentially thinking about being added. That is not necessarily, that is not being added.
Correct.
Excellent.
Based on feedback from the Policy Committee, as well as Weston High School.
Thank you.
Principal.
Other questions, comments? David, you want to?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve the updates to 6146, graduation requirements as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
The next one is the second read on the video monitoring and recording devices. This pertains to the schools, both inside, outside the school. It does not pertain to the bus. That is a different policy, correct, Sharon? We're going to be revisiting. Thank you, Mr. Guido, for drawing that to our attention. That needs to be reviewed as well. It's important because it also aligns with the practice of the MOU with the SRO, with the Weston Police Department, about their access to cameras. Again, it was pretty much discussed. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
No, but it's also important to mention that this video monitoring, because it's not part of the buses, is specific just video, no audio monitoring.
Correct. Correct. Thank you.
No, I think I did have one question from last time.
Sure.
I know, what are the, what are parents' rights to see the video?
Yes, it is explained if, yes. You know, we've had parents come in to see a particular video. Sometimes it might have to be tweaked based on privacy rights. Yeah, for other students. Exactly.
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve the updates to 1331, video monitoring and recording devices as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Safety and security.
Safety and security update. If we can get the presentation, I'm going to be moving. Let me move. Okay, we do have copies of the presentation, because some of the slides are dense and you may not be able to read it all. Okay, and it is our hope that, I know there were some, several points made during public comment, and I just want to add that I think many of those things will be addressed in this presentation. As always, if someone has anything specific that they need more information on, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I will be able to help you or point you in the right direction. But, this evening, we want to take this opportunity, next slide, please, to talk about, thank you, to talk about the state of the Weston Public Schools of Safety and Security. The administrative team, several members of the team will be speaking to go through this, and then, at the end, I would like to thank very much Chief Henyon, and I see that we have Sergeant Muccelli in the audience. It should be noted, for people that may not be aware, Joe Muccelli is a very valued member of the department. How many years now?
19.
19? I was going to say 20, right? And he also is the officer in charge of the town's crisis emergency management, and was an active participant in the interviews for the new, the new security director. So, thank you both for coming, and also for Commissioner Egan, I see you in the audience. Thank you. So, what we're going to be speaking about tonight are basically four key elements of safety and security. We're looking at physical security and the prevention, you know, to keep our schools safe, prevention strategies, cybersecurity, and also mental well-being. And it really is what I would say, multifaceted approach to all of this. You have to look at the security, you have to look at the specific campus, individual buildings, staffing. Cybersecurity is becoming more and more important. Mr. DeVito will be talking a little bit about that. We have our mental well-being, as we see, that is critical, especially when you, when you look at some of the things that have happened across the country. What are we doing to make sure that our students feel safe, that they feel secure, that they feel comfortable, that they feel cared for? And I have to say, I think we do an excellent job with that at the Weston Public Schools. So, we're going to be going through the four key elements, and people will be talking after each one. We're starting with the physical security and the threat prevention. And when you look at physical security and safeguarding the school environment, you're looking at things of the controlled access points, all our surveillance systems, the building designs, the barriers, monitoring systems, emergency preparedness plans. And then, threat prevention, again, identifying and mitigating potential threats before they materialize. How can we look at that? And yes, we have done threat assessments. Tracey Edwards will be speaking to that, establishing reporting mechanisms, and how can we foster a culture where students and staff really feel empowered to report concerns? I want to take a moment to thank the Director of Facilities, Michael DeMastro, who has been serving as an interim director with, actually, a team of us. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Dan, for helping us during the search for a new security director. I really appreciate everything that you've done, Mike. You're one of these kind of unsung heroes behind the scenes that just, you know, I can call you, 4 o'clock this morning, you're on the phone with me, telling me if it's safe to open school. So, thank you. I appreciate it. And I'd like to turn it over to you to go through the next few things specifically about the outside perimeter and keeping the schools safe with the physical security and the threat prevention.
All right. Homeland Security's five Ds of perimeter security, along with the Weston Public Schools' layered approach. The five are deter, detect, deny, delay, and defend. Unique features of the Weston Public School campus, we're one of two school systems in Fairfield County to have all buildings within a single campus. Very unique. The Weston Police Department is located at the rear of the elementary school. We also have a crime lab, which is located within our campus, which accesses unique subject matter shared with, shared between multiple agencies. Physical security and threat prevention. Goal is to establish and maintain a top-tier security framework for a safe environment. Strategy, adopt a multi-layered strategy to prevent threats from entering our buildings. Tactics, proactively employ Homeland Security's recommended layered approach across five core pillars. Employing experienced personnel, securing the campus perimeter, hardening school buildings, integrating state-of-the-art technology, ensuring a best-in-class security posture With the five core pillars of physical security with personnel, we employ an experienced team of professionals that work in partnership with the police to effectively employ a flexible security posture with rapid response time. Thank you, Dan. We have Director of Safety and Security, two security specialists at Weston High School, two security specialists at Weston Middle School.
If I may, you jumped way ahead. You're not on the right side. Okay, that's the slide. Thank you.
It clicks quick, I'm sorry.
I'll start back from the beginning. We have a Director of Safety and Security, two security specialists at Weston High School, two security specialists at Weston Middle School, one security specialist at Weston Intermediate School, one security specialist at Hurwood Elementary School, one floater primarily at Weston Intermediate School and Hurwood Elementary School. We also have two resource officers on campus in multiple buildings, and we also have one mile of safety officer, which covers the entire campus. I will now hand this over to Julie.
Thank you, Mike. So, if I might, I'd like to just go into a little bit more detail regarding the personnel that was referenced. So, as we've been discussing this evening, Weston has a Director of Safety and Security position. This position was new in the district last year. Prior to last year, the responsibilities that fell within this job description were part of people's, people in other roles. So, we were very pleased to be able to add this position for this sole purpose last year. It is not a position that many districts have. In fact, our neighbors in Westport, Wilton, and ER9 do not have such a position, and so, we feel very pleased that we're able to have one person who's very focused on these particular tasks. So, we saw a need to have a dedicated professional oversee security-related infrastructure, operations, and staffing, and to coordinate with our own facilities, IT and operations departments, our building administrators, and also the local agencies, including Weston Police, Fire, and EMS. The Director is actively involved in emergency planning for the district, as well as management of crisis events, campus monitoring in the day-to-day, the supervision of our security staff, as well as training for all of our staff members. In addition to our Director, as Mike mentioned, we have seven security specialists on staff. Our security specialists are directly responsible for onsite safety and security operations in the day-to-day. They support traffic control at arrival and dismissal, and I want to note that we have two separate arrival and dismissal times on our campus. They also manage visitor entry. We are all locked buildings at all times, so that is a very significant component of their work. As well as at the high school, they manage student sign-in and sign-out with open campus. They monitor cameras, patrol the interior and exterior of our campus, and participate as members of our school's security teams. And in addition, it was, it was mentioned earlier this evening that last week was concert week at the high school. I do want to note that in addition to their day-to-day, regular work during the day, they also staff many after-school events and activities, including our back-to-school nights, concerts, plays, ceremonies like graduation and the moving up, our athletic events. And I will note that this is a very professional and experienced staff. They come to us with a wealth of experience and background in military, law enforcement, and also private security. In Weston, we're fortunate to have two school resource officers dedicated to our schools. They have primary assignments at Weston Middle School and Weston High School, with secondary assignments at our elementary schools. In their day-to-day work as school resource officers, we see them primarily as educators, as counselors, and liaisons, and they can be seen delivering lessons. I have seen their lessons on social media use. They work with our high school students, learning self-defense strategies, and they also tailor those lessons to age appropriately to our elementary students. They also serve as members of our school's security committees, and they participate actively in our school emergency drills. And it is important to note that they are fully equipped and highly trained Weston Police There it is. In addition to our school resource officers, we also have a mile of safety officer. This position rotates within the Weston Police, and the person who is performing the role supports our campus operations with traffic control, campus patrol, and also emergency response. This officer participates in our emergency drills. And again, our Weston Police are highly trained, fully equipped officers, and you will often see the vehicle in various locations around our campus. So, as noted, the officers of the Weston Police are highly trained, they maintain state-of-the-art equipment, and I will also note that they are known by face and by name by our staff members, and also by students and families. We see them in and out of our buildings. Often, they do participate in our emergency response drills. They, as Superintendent Barbiero noted, Officer Muccelli participated in our recent interview committee. So, we have a very close relationship with our partners at the Weston Police, and we feel very confident in their support of our work here. Their proximity to our campus also ensures a quick response. I will note that in my 10 years in Weston, I've had to call 911 at times, and I am always astonished by the rapid response that we get from our police department. So, it is very reassuring to have them. In terms of our next steps, it's been mentioned earlier this evening that the board has formed a subcommittee on safety and security with members, Mr. Guido, Mr. Ezzies, and Mr. Felton, who are participating on that subcommittee. And in addition, it has also been noted that we have identified our new Director of Safety and Security, Lieutenant James Wiltse. Lieutenant Wiltse is retiring from the Fairfield Police Department, where he has served for 25 years, the last three of which he has been the commander of the school's safety division there. So, he is very highly knowledgeable. He is doing this work in the day-to-day, and we are very pleased that he will be joining us. And we will be looking, in the new year, to set up an opportunity for him to have a meet and greet with our staff and also with the community. And with that, I'm going to send it back to Mike.
Thank you, Julie. We're going to discuss the perimeter, which is one of the five core pillars of physical security. We secure school campus by creating an umbrella of defense around the district's outdoor spaces and buildings. We have signs posted announcing closings certain times of the day around select areas of the grounds. We have man-operated gates, mechanical gates or electric, that we close as soon as the last bus arrives on campus. We have bollards in different buildings to protect our front entrances. Our next steps, in coordination with the town of Weston, we're going to continue to communicate that campus grounds are closed during school hours. And again, that's just select locations, not the entire campus. not the entire campus. Continue rollout of extended bollard installations. Discuss solutions to reinforce various sections along school road, i.e. the North House Playground. Engage with the town of Weston to discuss considerations and visibility of closing school road. I'm now going to pass this over to Dan.
Thanks, Mike. So our, our key objective is leveraging cutting-edge technology to bolster, oh, wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
I apologize, everybody, this is not my wheel, wheelhouse. All right. We'll discuss the buildings, another one of the core pillars of physical security. Harden school structures to prevent entry, keeping, keeping the fight outside. Some of our current highlights that we have already achieved, window film wrapping in all of our schools. Doors have been secured and/or replaced that weren't functioning properly, could be main door, other doors. Left-side handles on all doors are, have been removed, except the Board of Education over here that we guys can get in. Single point of entries are enforced. Classroom door, window shades have been replaced. Our next steps, we're going to complete the installation of an auto-locking mechanical device for our classroom doors, just another lock set, which will remain always locked in the locked position. That way, it cannot be physically unlocked.
Mike, when's that scheduled for? I know we're starting with the intermediate school. The locks haven't been changed in about nine years. They came in, right?
They're shipping on the 18th, and they're gonna start installation on December 23rd.
Great, so hopefully by January 2nd.
They should all be completed.
When the kids come back, that will be done in that particular building, which has, I would say, probably the most challenging locks.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Very unique from all the other buildings.
Are all the other buildings, the locks in all the other buildings are already locking? The classrooms already have the auto-locking doors in the other buildings?
The other doors in the buildings, you can walk through from the inside out, and they remain locked. The intermediate school, the way it was designed, it's a different style of lock, that if the door is locked, and as soon as you open the door and you walk through from the inside to the hallway, it automatically completely unlocks the door, so it has to really be, it has to actually be re-engaged to lock it. But those will all be changed as well. Also, next step, review recommendation of ballistic glass considerations in specific areas. And now I will hand it over to Dan.
Thanks, Mike. So our key objective is leveraging cutting-edge technology to bolster the identification, tracking, and management of security threats in real-time. Recent improvements include advanced visitor management and notification systems to strengthen proactive threat detections, as well as our upgraded surveillance infrastructure, and we implemented campus-wide communication tools. Our upcoming initiatives include launching the use of portable alert devices with geolocation capabilities to enhance response efficiency during emergencies, which actually, we got them on Friday, so I have a sample right over here. So we got our first batch that we had talked about last month, and we're in the process of getting everything set up, configured on the backend, and rolled out. So that's exciting that we got them on Friday.
And we're starting, that is a pilot, and we're starting with, I believe it is the intermediate school, Patty, correct? I think that's the school that we chose to begin the, the rollout in, if you will. If you want to pass it over to this side, so the Board can see what it looks like?
Yeah, of course.
Please, no one push the red button.
Please don't, we're going left.
We do have instant response, but, and it's, it's, it's very easy to, to do. So just for clarification, Dan, isn't it correct that, so now we will put in the, the portable ones on the lanyards, but that doesn't mean that we haven't had them, alert buttons in the school, we've had them on laptops, we've had them.
Correct, so.
Ways. This is just another layer of it.
Correct, so we, we've always, we've had the panic buttons throughout the building, and recently, we also implemented all staff having the ability to initiate a panic alarm from their desktops now. So we, they've had now the ability individually, now where they'll have the panic button, which gives them the geolocation as well. So we're constantly looking to implement and give people ways of notifying in the event of an emergency.
And Dan, really quickly, what is, what is the anticipated rollout? How, how is that gonna go in terms of timing? So it's gonna start at WIS, that's gonna, I would imagine, be engaged, let's say, in January. There'll be a, a time period by which we test it, and then we'll roll it out to the remainder schools.
That's correct.
Do we have sort of anticipated timeline as to when all of that's gonna happen?
So, the, the goal is, over the next couple of weeks, to really configure everything from the backend, and so there's a lot of notifications and stuff we have to do on the server in terms of what happens when somebody pushes the button, where's the location, how does it notify dispatch? We want to streamline that process as best as we possibly can, so we want to work the kinks out over the next few weeks, with the goal of rolling everything out in the beginning, with the first batch out in the beginning of January, giving it a couple of weeks, stress testing, fingers crossed there's no unforeseen issues, and then we will continue with the rollout of panic buttons for the rest of the district. So hopefully, and don't hold me to this, I would really like to get everything rolled out by February, the beginning of February, to all staff. But I want us to take our time and make sure, we're, I'm, we're trying to learn from other districts around the country who have implemented a panic button in some way, shape, or form, and we're trying to learn from any mistakes that they've made, to make sure that we kind of safeguard for any kind of, for instance, accidental clicking of the panic button. That's why we got that panic button, where the button isn't right out there. And how does it open up? And you know, there was discussions about how difficult is it? This one's very easy. We also want to make sure the geolocation is proper. So, we're just in the beginning phases of that, hoping February for a full rollout. Don't quote me on it, but I'll have more information as the next meetings come up.
Two more quick comments. Number one, I guess, are we, do you know if there are any other schools around here implementing these sort of panic buttons on lanyards, or are we among the first, I guess, is the first question?
We, as far as I know, in our area, we're, we're, we are one of the first, but I think it's kind of a tidal wave that's coming, so.
Got it.
We may say we're the first, but we may be the first tied with a bunch of other people who are, who are implementing it, so that's why there's a lot of people looking for information, there's different products out there. But in terms of the state of Connecticut, at least with the model we have, nobody has implemented it, but you're starting to see that kind of swell up now.
Perfect. And then, just a quick question for you, Lisa. Are there, is, is there any policy that we need to be aware of going forward that we're gonna have to draft in terms of the usage, the, you know, implementation, et cetera, these butt buttons?
I don't believe so. I, I think that, that's a good point, we can check. I think that the important thing is, is the activation of it. You know, in part of our research, we learned like, oh, press it three times and it means this, press it twice. That causes a lot of confusion. Press it, help comes, right? One press, that's it. And I think that we operate under, you know, that it's a good faith, you know, effort, but every adult has to be responsible for that panic button. Somebody said, don't call it a panic button, call it a, what was the other word?
Rapid location.
No, it was something like, link?
Yes.
I don't know, it was some.
Quick, quick link, yeah.
A, a quick link, which is really a great way to explain it to kids. You know, you know, a, a third grader, what's around, you're not gonna, I got my panic button on, no. You know, oh, I have a quick link if, if we need help, because it's true, it could be medical emergency, different things. So, but the adults do, will have to take responsibility, there's a training component with it, to make sure that they know how to do it, that they, if it needs to be charged, how they're doing it, they have to be assigned. But we are committed to making this a priority and getting it out as quickly and efficiently as possible.
And like Lisa mentioned, you know, there's different avenues you can take with panic buttons. Well, one press does this, two presses is medical. In the event of an emergency, people aren't gonna remember that, not gonna have the fine motor skills to say, I gotta click it twice and hold it on the third time, so it's just, you push the button, it initiates a lockdown. That's all it's for, it's not for anything other than that. And so these are the types of conversations that we're constantly having, because at face value, they say, hey, you know what, maybe it can be a multipurpose button, but as you talk it through, that's the worst idea.
And I think it's important to note that we have really, and Julie had said it, we have really good response here with the, with the police. I, I mean, I can think of four examples just over in the last two years where, you know, I, I think the chief was there in, in 30 seconds, and one, we had a, a youngster push a button, curiously. We just had one recently where something on the radio, you know, you kind of leaned over, and the radio, the button went off by mistake, and we were right there, we have the screens, we see that, and I said, the police are going in that building, what's going on? Don't worry. And you'd see, the mile of safety, the school resource officer, the other school resource officer, they were all there within, oh my gosh, I think the first one was there in 20 seconds. And it, it was an accident by an employee that had the button, and it didn't, didn't sound any alarms in the building, you know, we kept it low-key, because it was, you know, clipped, and you kind of leaned over, and the side of her body hit it off. So we, we have to take these things into consideration, but the, the best thing is, is that help comes really quickly. We're very fortunate, we're on one school road, and the police department's right next to Hurbutt, as opposed to, you know, if you're in the northern part of Darien at Ox Ridge School, you're waiting for the police to drive up there from downtown.
There we go. Okay. All right. So our strategic focus is to ensure all personnel and stakeholders are equipped with the knowledge and skills to handle emergencies effectively through consistent training and assessment protocols. We have conducted specialized training programs, including emergency medical response, FEMA-certified crisis management, and drills for fires, lockdowns, and reunification scenarios. For our next steps, I know the Security Subcommittee will be discussing the necessity of engaging in an independent security audit.
One thing I want to add, and it has to do with the new Security Director, we do think that it is important that he weighs in on this third-party independent security audit. Lieutenant James Wiltse comes highly trained, and I, can you elaborate a little bit, Julie, and I know Tina was there too, and I know Joe Muccelli was there? He was the person that was training people in Fairfield Ground, correct? With the I love you guys training that you went to?
Yes. So last spring, let me see if I can get this correct, Tina and I, some, some other school administrators, and Teresa from the bus garage, we all attended a training session that was being held for Fairfield Public Schools staff in conjunction with their emergency services personnel. They did open it up to area districts, and we were able to attend, and it was a reunification exercise, training exercise that we were able to sit in on, and Lieutenant Wiltse was instrumental in organizing that training. So yes, we're very, very, very pleased that he is a very experienced person at this work. I will share that we spoke with him directly about the possibility of an outside audit and, and his position on the usefulness of such a thing, and I, I wouldn't dare to speak for him, but certainly I would say that he has his own ideas and opinions about the value of that work and how it might be useful to him in his new role. So certainly, I, I imagine he would look forward to that conversation.
He also, I just want to share with our audience, watched every board meeting and reviewed every document on security before the first interview, I think. And so he is well-prepared for this level of work, and has a pretty good, solid understanding about the parental concerns moving forward.
And I might say, is Joe still here? Joe has, you know, Joe has been in training sessions as well, so he's already familiar with, with, with the new director.
So with cybersecurity, our strategic vision is to safeguard critical digital systems and sensitive data by implementing robust cybersecurity defenses and promoting a secure digital environment for learning. Our key measures include strengthening data privacy and regulatory compliance, fortifying digital infrastructure against cyber attacks, and fostering awareness through targeted training initiatives. We're looking to equip staff with specialized protocols to mitigate risks such as swatting threats while cultivating a culture of cyber, cyber vigilance. When it comes to cybersecurity, this is something that happens on a, on a daily basis that we don't talk about all that much. Today alone, there were three different school districts in Connecticut where accounts were phished and hacked, and then they in turn tried to fish and hack every other school district in Connecticut. So it's a constant vigilance, where it's not just the fact that our system catches it, it's a user to identify and say, this doesn't look real, and to notify us, and then we take the appropriate steps. So it's, it, training is a huge part of cybersecurity, and we're constantly working on it.
Well, and part of it, just for the viewing office to know, it's, it's, doesn't necessarily involve the children. Recently, we've had issues with finance, where people are pretending that they are people sitting around this table and placing orders for hundreds of thousands of dollars for computers, and taking stuff off our website and pretending that they're us, which I, I have to tell you, I was shocked, and I have to again thank Weston Police over here within minutes, and this is what you need to do, this is how you need to handle it. So it's, it's, it's something, the swatting is the same thing. And again, I have to thank Ed Hanyan and the police. Anytime there is an incident that happens, Ed Hanyan calls me, or today, when I didn't pick up the phone, because I was in an important meeting, I came out of my meeting, and there he is sitting in the chair, to make sure that I knew that there had been a shooting in Wisconsin. Or that, the other day, when you called me, I was actually homesick, Lisa, there was a swatting incident. It was in Westport in the old public elementary schools. Immediately, what happens? Everybody reminds those secretaries, there was one right down the road, get out your paperwork, you have all the protocols, everyone from Central Office to anyone answering the phones, these are continually reviewed, so, thank you.
Next, and I get to say this for the first time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Edwards, who will summarize mental health and well-being.
Thanks, Dan. Another key element of safety and security is addressing the mental health needs of students and staff. Mental health services and programs to support social-emotional learning are district-wide priorities and available to students across grade levels. We also work collaboratively to build supportive, engaging environments in our schools that proactively address potential safety concerns. Our commitment to the well-being of our students is perhaps most evident in our district-wide staffing model. In addition to my role as the Director of PPS, we have three Assistant Directors of PPS overseeing our work across the district. You might remember that the third Assistant Director position was added a few years ago to ensure consistency for students and families during transition years, and to provide a higher level of support to students, families, and school teams for the services and programs in our district. Our mental health team includes a school psychologist and social worker at HES, the same model exists at WIS. At the middle school, we have three school counselors, one for each grade level, and that school counselor, remember, transitions with that class for all three years, a school psychologist, and a social worker. And at the high school, we have five school counselors who also follow their cohort of students, one school psychologist, one social worker who is dedicated to the Pathways Program, and another social worker who supports the needs of the remaining high school students. In addition to our staffing model, we have invested in social-emotional learning programs to support students in all four schools. Students at HES and WIS benefit from our work with responsive classroom, ruler, PBIS, while the focus at the middle school is ruler and DBT Steps A. At the high school, our work continues with DBT Steps A exclusively. We also joined the Regional Juvenile Review Board several years ago, which is a program designed to serve as an advisory board to help our local police department respond to and address juvenile offenses. Finally, all district administrators participated in comprehensive school threat assessment training in the summer of 2023. C-STAG is the acronym for that, is an approach to evaluating potential threats of violence within schools, with an emphasis on early identification and intervention strategy. strategies to address behaviors and other conflicts before they escalate into violent acts. It's a process of gathering information, analyzing behavior and developing plans that mitigate risks and protect students. And now I'll turn it back to Superintendent Barbiero for a discussion of next steps.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Um, so as was mentioned tonight, we do have a new, uh, Board of Ed Subcommittee on Safety and Security. Look, it's quite clear that, uh, the community is very, um, concerned about the safety as all our, as all of us are of our students. And so I think that the appropriate next step is to have a, a Board of Ed Subcommittee with regular meetings and, um, uh, timed Zoom meetings, agendas, everything to really formulate that process. And I have to say, I have to thank, uh, Michael Guido when, um, uh, Chair Aziz asked, uh, Mr. Guido to, um, serve as Chair, he, uh, stepped out because, Mike, we know that you've been very passionate about this. I remember you being a parent in the audience and getting up and speaking about it before you became a member of the board, so it's very, uh, important and we do have our first meeting scheduled. Mike helped, helped give us his good thinking on this presentation, as did one of the parents, shout out to Christine, because we really want to make sure we're answering and being as transparent as we can be without crossing a line to, um, adversely affect the safety of our children. So hopefully, um, this information is, is providing you with a, a solid foundation of where we are and where we're going to be. I'd like to, um, give Mr. Guido an opportunity to speak about a couple of the upcoming things and to also thank, um, him and, uh, Mr. Felton for serving on the committee. The interview committee was a long, uh, day, um, interviewing, listening to the, the candidates had to present to us, and actually the presentation involved, uh, the parent and the community component, which was very eye-opening. So, Mr. Guido.
Thanks, Lisa, appreciate it. Look to everyone in the audience too. Um, I'm, I'm really excited with the steps that we're taking. I believe we're on a path to, let me move this over here. I believe we're on a path to create and really support a best-in-class security platform here. Um, we're really looking to build trust with the community, um, increase the interaction and transparency, of course. Uh, look, I want to thank personally the, the administration, the BOE, um, and especially the parents here, um, for helping us to get a point, to the point that we, at which we find ourselves today. In advancing those efforts, I would just say, look, I'm thrilled with the announcement of the new Safety and, and Security Subcommittee. Look forward to working with David, Dave and Steve on that, as well as Lisa and the new Director of Security. Um, these meetings are going to be held basically, you know, every second Tuesday of every month at eight thirty AM, um, beginning on January fourteenth, so, you know, as a reminder, they're open to the public, so please attend and, uh, we welcome your comments. Also excited to, you know, as has been announced before, the recent hiring of the new Director of Security. Um, look, he's, he's scheduled to start, I believe, February third. I'm really thankful for the collaborative, uh, effort with David and Lisa, uh, David and Lisa, um, as well as Joe, Joe Mochelli, who's in the, in the audience, um, Phil here, um, Julie, Tracy, so everyone was a part, um, Tina, um, there was a big, uh, committee and a big effort to make sure that we got this one right.
Yeah, the mental side of the room.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, yeah, yeah, Mike, Dan, exactly. I do want to elaborate a little bit. Look, Jim has a twenty-four, twenty-five year career in law and law enforcement in Fairfield. Um, he's led security in Fairfield for three years now, and that district includes seventeen schools and over nine thousand students. Um, so he's been tasked with an enormous amount of responsibility in that district and complexity. Prior to his time at Fairfield, uh, his experience includes nearly twenty years in the US Marines, so he's pretty direct, um, which is, which is good. And he'll be very willing and, and he's, he's told us in the, in the interviews, very willing to engage with parents. Um, so I'm excited about that. To that point, look, I would just say, um, in the spirit of enhancing transparency communication, um, and Julie mentioned this before, but we'll be scheduling these meet the, meet the Director interactive discussions where parents in the larger community will have the opportunity to engage with Jim to express any concerns or thoughts and ask questions, um, as he kicks off his tenure in Weston. Uh, those interactive discussions are TBD, they'll be held sometime in February, we hope, um, before the February break. And look, with, with all of these changes, I believe that, you know, this represents a, a shift to a more transparent communicative stance with the community. Um, and I'm excited about it and I hope you all weigh in on what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. So, um, I appreciate all the, all the voices out there and, um, looking forward to working with you guys going forward. So, um, thanks so much. Back to you, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Guido. Um, and finally, I just wanted to give a little bit of background, um, some people are, uh, relatively new to the community, maybe here within the last five to ten years. And it, it's always, um, I think, uh, good to kind of take a look at the timeline of the district initiatives and, um, how we have addressed certain things over the last, uh, twenty-five years, basically twenty years. So, Mr. Cross, that task is yours, if you could just point out a few highlights.
Sure. Thank you, Lisa. So as you've heard, uh, there's been many, uh, implemented security initiatives dating back to two thousand and six. The important thing to note here is that all of these initiatives have been done, um, working in conjunction with the police department. Going back to two thousand and six, um, the first mile of safe, we implemented the mile of safety partnership with, with Weston PD. In two thousand and twelve, fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, um, we increased the number of security aides or security guards from five to nine. One of the important things here is that back in, back, uh, this time in two thousand and thirteen, we added more guards with law enforcement background and that still continues today. In two thousand fiscal year fourteen, um, window films were strategically placed on doors and windows. In fiscal year sixteen, we started our first round of classroom locks upgrades. Fiscal six, fiscal year seventeen was primarily focused on training. Um, the, the big thing here was the development of our, of our reunification plan. In fiscal nineteen, this was a year where we focused primarily our lot on technology. Um, we added Rapture, which is our visitor management system. We added several additional cameras and, uh, we also, more importantly, added our alert system. Alert system is a system that we currently use, um, to send notification throughout the schools and also to the police department. Fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, we had a district-wide Stop the Bleed training. In fiscal twenty-three, um, we had additional training and we also, to ensure that we could also track where our students were, we added a, the student portal, our student kiosk to our Rapture system and this primarily relates to the high school. In fiscal twenty-three, we added our Director of School Safety and Security. We also added, um, our district-wide security specialist Florida. Most important here in fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four is that we, we significantly improved or added, um, the window film at two of our schools. We also strategically addressed some, through some issues that we have with exterior doors altered one of our schools and this continues as well. Um, we also continued our reunification training. Fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five was a big year. We had, this was, again, was primarily focused on technol, technology. The big thing that we had, that we achieved this summer was we, where we upgraded our service and we added or upgraded several of our cameras. And again, classroom doors and shades were replaced and installed with it, did this in October. Um, we, as Dan mentioned, we have ordered and will be rolling out our, our portable alert buttons and we will begin in, in December, um, into early January, start the first round of door lock improvements. Lisa.
Thank you, Phil. One thing that I, um, I want to highlight, back in sixteen, seventeen and, um, uh, twenty-eighteen, nineteen, which I'm really proud of, is, uh, the initiative with the town, working closely with the police department to, um, put in a school resource officer back in sixteen, seventeen, first at the high school, when I was principal of the high school, and then in eighteen, nineteen, Mr. Doak, you got yours at the middle school. I, I, I would be hard pressed to find in another, uh, school in the state, who knows about the country, where the, uh, school resource officer at the high school was asked to speak at graduation. You know, that is the custom here where, um, they vote, the kids vote on who they want to hear speak, what adult they want to speak, uh, um, at this important milestone of their lives. And to see, you know, Joe Morgoyon up there speaking at graduation, it was, uh, it was really, I think it says a lot about, um, the school resource officer program, again, here in Weston. Um, it's a, it's a wonderful program and we're so happy that, uh, you know, Joe's moved on to be detective, but we have John, Johnny Marcelli now working with Officer Kim. And finally, one other thing I want to add, I don't think we mentioned, but I want everyone to hear that and thank the board's support in this. When we, um, hired James Wiltse, um, we made this position now a twelve-month position and the people sitting over here across from me, uh, were very happy about that, especially facilities and, um, technology, because as you can see, a lot gets done in the summer. And to be able to have someone there for the summer, you know, uh, is extremely important. So to be able to have a director on site for the, uh, twelve months, to be able to, uh, partner with, um, security and facilities to make sure that we are in the best, uh, possible position for the, um, for our campus, I think is, is huge. And I want to thank the board for supporting that position going, uh, you know, to be twelve months. Um, so at this time, that kind of wraps up, uh, our presentation. We are certainly, um, here to answer any, uh, questions that the board, um, may have. Um, I want to reiterate what Mr. Guido said, um, it is our intention to have the Director of Safety and Security before the February break, be able to meet with parents and to have more of a discussion back and forth with parents. But if you have any questions for us or, um, I dare say, Chief Henyon, um, thank you for being here in the, uh, audience, may I defer to you if a question comes my way that I can't answer to you and Sergeant Mochelli, thank you.
I'll jump right in with a couple of things, um, for the community. First, we don't know what we don't know, um, and I think that's the most important piece. And because we don't know what we don't know, uh, we have a group of really, really, really good security, police and administrators. It's something that I have learned, being fortunate enough to sit through the interview process and listen to parents and push back on the administration when I didn't think things were right and, um, we do, we have a really, really good group of dedicated people. And, um, even the security specialists, some of them are, actually, most of them are retired cops and their position is they're going to protect the students, they're going to protect the community and they're also going to do as they're asked. There's, um, just a lot of camaraderie and, and, um, uh, they, I think they just really enjoy working here. Also, uh, I made a couple notes to myself, uh, school security is always evolving and so I think that one promise you have, at least from people I've interacted with, is that we're not going to become complacent, we're not going to do everything on day one, but you have to go through a list of priorities. Some of those priorities, uh, Captain Berdacki helped us with, but he's retired, he's moved on and we, uh, fortunately have, uh, the Chief, Henyon, and we have Sergeant Mochelli, unbelievable resources as well. I really didn't know Joe very well prior to, uh, Captain's retiring, but once I got to know Joe as well, it, it really is, as from a parent's perspective, uh, the dedication of everybody, especially our, our police department, um, to our students. And the last piece is, um, just ask everyone to trust the process. We are definitely dedicated to, uh, security. And I've got kids in the schools, so I take it to, really important for me as well. So that, I don't really have anything to add, other than just by having the chief and the sergeant here tonight, it, it just goes to show from the top down, school security is, is top of mind for Weston Public Schools.
I'll build on David's comments. Uh, I think the key one was it's evolving, the challenges arise and we'll have three examples in front of me today. One is, if you read the New York Times today, two articles. One was drones buzzing, New Jersey public schools. In fact, my niece's elementary school got buzzed today. Two, fight clubs in high schools with cell phones where they set up a fight and then they broadcast the fight throughout the whole school. So that addresses some of the challenges that Dr. Edwards faces. And the third, when, uh, we start actually, uh, working on the campus, we invite strangers in equipment onto the campus and that poses a whole new set of challenges. So I applaud the formation of the committee, cause I think that, that will take a lot of thinking, how do we manage our security once it gets disrupted when we invite, you know, construction workers onto the campus? And those are my three points.
I'll jump in with a few thoughts. So, yeah, I'm not an expert on this at all. I'm, like you, David, have kids in the district, so feel qualified in that regard only. Uh, this is unfortunately an issue where you're never going to get to zero risk, but this does, on the face of it, look like, perhaps not at the timeline that everyone would have liked, but there's a lot of, uh, yeses on this list and it, at least it looks to me at first blush anyway, that except for maybe the security audit, which is still a TBD, that many of the things that have been floating around on kind of a wish list that folks have been talking about are, are present here, so that's, I think, promising. Uh, I do have a question for you, uh, Doctor, I'll say that, Doctor Edwards, now that you're a doctor. So the threat assessment, that was the, uh, twenty-twenty-three, I believe that was donated to the school in the summer of twenty-twenty-three? Do I have that right? Superintendent Barbiero, do you remember? I feel like C-STAG donated that service.
I honestly can't remember if it was donated, but, um, Dr. Elliott did that presentation for us. She is a Weston resident and she has been extremely generous with her time and willingness to, um, be a supportive thought partner, so I don't.
It was donated. I gave her a T-shirt.
There you go. Well, I, I, obviously people should be compensated for their time. I'm, I'm only flagging the, we should try to disentangle budget from other things sometimes, but it just seems to me that that should be, and this is probably a committee question, why shouldn't we roll that into an annual thing if the experts suggest that that is the, the right time? I don't know if you need it every year, but if it is, then maybe that's something to consider on the committee. If it's not a yearly thing, based on their recommendations, then, then obviously let it go. But, um, so I was just thinking that when you said summer of twenty-twenty-three. And the other thing that, and I keep raising this and I think it's worth pushing it, uh, to raise it, because we're a small enough community that values would really matter in this, in this community and also just sort of setting precedent and normalizing things. When this whole conversation came up about two years ago, there was this topic of what's called safe storage or secure storage, and I think it's worth waving that flag a little bit and I'll tell you why. It's the simplest thing of essentially creating a sense of reciprocity in terms of organizing playdates, that sort of thing, where the adults in the community just get used to literally asking questions about if you have guns in your home, are they safely stored? And the research on this is pretty clear that it's one of the small ways, if we're talking about a implementing an all-of-the-above approach, it's one of the small ways to bring like tiny statistical sort of threat down, because you're creating a sense of community obligation to make sure that weapons are stored safely. The reason this is so important is a lot of what we're talking about, the safety events involve guns that are already in the community. So as the committee's thinking about your work, it seems like if we can create a culture of that being kind of normalized, that might be a smart step. Uh, the final question I want to ask is about the reunification plan. This is probably my own ignorance, but I, however that is shared, I know there has to be a lot of sort of, um, privacy and security measures about that, but to the, however that is shared, it would, I would love to learn more about that, just because I had some questions about how that was, how, how that works. But that's probably my ignorance and not any indication of, of lack of certainty or clarity on that.
No, that was one of the things that I, um, I, the committee also pressed, uh, the candidates on and, um, and Lieutenant Wiltse, because yeah, there's a plan. Uh, but, you know, having a plan and, and living the plan and really making and ensuring that everything runs smoothly with the plan is, is going to be one of the first things that, that I want him to look at. That, the independent audit, and he- That, the independent audit, and he, look, he's going to be coming in, and when he comes in, the locks will all be done at the intermediate school, which was the most problematic with the deadbolt and all of that. That'll be taken care of. And then one of the schools, at least one of them, you know, hopefully more will have rolled out the panic, what was it called? Quicklink, the quicklink buttons. But those are two things right up front that we really want him to look at. It's very important. And the thing I would like to mention about, you know, we're very fortunate in this community. And I mean, I feel very blessed that there are people in the community that step forward and say, I can help you with that. And that's what Megan Elliott did. You know, she goes around to our neighboring schools and, you know, and through her, where she works, they charge. And she said, no, no, you know, we were all ready to pay, you know, no, no, I want to do this for the community. Same thing with Ellen Kraft, and she was behind the safe storage, and that was done through, that was the Police Commission, correct Commissioner Egan, I believe, which was great. Not a lot of people came, but hopefully the word gets out, you know, little by small. We have to keep reinforcing this. But, yeah, it's everybody together. It's a collective responsibility to raise these children and let them be safe and be children. And to, you know, I'm just so proud of the middle school and their no more cellphone thing, because I think that it's done wonders, quite frankly, for the culture of that school. And to walk in and see the kids so, you know, reminds me of the old days when I was here in the 80s, and you see them talking at lunch and being kids. It's wonderful. One other thing I want to mention, I forgot to mention it, there was some talk and some, what I would say, miscommunication about radios. And I think that there was a perception that we needed more radios. The staff that need the radios, the go outside, the coaches, the administrators, the, all of those people, we have radios, we have enough radios, we have the radios. Radios were upgraded. That was one of the little glitches with when she leaned in and then the button went off because her side got the button. But we have radios. I think that there was a feeling, perhaps, further back in time where we needed more, but we got them, we have them. That doesn't mean that they don't, might not need to be upgraded in the future, but we have them. I mean, there's one that sits on Jody Scudda's desk, I listen to it all the time, but when they go outside, the teachers and everything, we have the radios. I don't want anyone to think that that's a missing link.
If I can just add, I probably have more tenure here than anyone on the board, given my time in the Board of Finance. I guess Dawn would know this, and actually, Joe, you and I have been here about the same amount of time. The town overall should be complimented for the initiatives that they've approved. The mile of safety officer was a bone of contention between the town and the Board of Education on the cost, and there's more concern about cost sharing than what that officer was going to bring to the campus. And the town, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Education recognized that having that mile of safety officer, now almost 20 years ago, more than 20 years ago, was important. After Sandy Hook in this very room, the, there was a meeting between the Board of Finance and the Board of Education about putting 3M film on the windows. It was a half a million dollars, I believe, and there was not a question raised by the Board of Finance in funding that. Part of the $230,000 that were turning back has to do with school safety that the Board of Finance approved. So the school resource officer program that we instituted 2016, I can tell you, and Joe and Ed probably know this, Westport, people always compare us to Westport, I think they got SROs a couple, three years ago. I think it was their first. I think they have two, two officers, they have eight schools. We have two officers, we have four schools. So the town should be complimented for supporting recommendations made by the Board of Education, and I assume that we're going to see this same in the future with whatever recommendations Mike's committee, Michael's committee, is going to recommend to the board. So this timeline, I think, is very important that you put together, Lisa. And I think the other thing that's important, Tracy, is, and they, is mental health. I mean, I don't, we don't know the particulars of the event in Madison, Wisconsin, other than it was a young woman who came into that school, and so...
Student.
Young student. And so mental health may be, you know, preeminent in dealing with, or making sure these situations don't occur. So, you know, you'll put your PhD to good use, you know, going forward. But I'm looking forward to, Michael and David, I'm looking forward to seeing how we progress this. But the town, I think, has to be complimented on being supportive over the years.
Well, and one thing I want to mention is, you know, the mile of safety, it rotates through all the officers, right? So every officer knows. We already met Officer Clark, right? She was here, like, I went to her swearing in, and the next day, she came the same day as the Chinese delegation. There she was. I see her at the high school, I'm like, Officer Clark, great, you're here, because it was Steve, which officer?
Steve.
Yes, Steve Itchilli was taking her around. And then I go to the middle school, because we were touring with the Chinese delegation, there she is again. So it was so good to see, like, immediately, right? What was her, second day of the job? You guys were taking her around, making sure she knew everybody in the schools, yeah, one day, first day. So that, I think that speaks to the level of importance that mile of safety officer position is, that, yeah, they don't mess around, they know those schools inside and out.
So I want to say, first of all, thank you to the administration for putting this presentation together. I know that it took quite a bit of time and effort to put this together, and thank you to the Police Department and the town, of course, for being so cooperative and supportive of all the security measures. Clearly, second to education, security is the largest priority on this campus. And as a parent who sends her child to school here every day, as a matter of fact, five of the seven board members all send their kids to school here every day. And also as a parent who had a kindergartner when Sandy Hook took place, you know, security is a huge priority, without a doubt. And I have to say, I would not send my child to the school if I didn't feel that they were secure. Clearly, no school is ever going to be 100% secure unless you put them, or kids into a maximum security prison. That's not why we moved to Weston. But we can do the best possible, we can work our hardest to mitigate the dangers that exist for our kids in this, in this world that we live in now. With that being said, I love the SRO program. That has been such a successful program here, and I'm so happy that we have it. Now, there are younger parents who are new to town, who have questioned why there's no SRO officer in the two lower schools. And I know the answer, but I would love if someone else would explain why the SRO program is not appropriate for Hurlbut or WIS, for the younger parents to understand. Yeah, if someone could do that.
I'll start, and then others can jump in. The first thing that we have to recognize is that the two SROs have, are each assigned to one of the elementary schools as well. So they go, they go over there in the mornings, at arrival, they go there at dismissal. But when you think about an SRO, and where an SRO makes connections, like Officer Marsili, it's in the cafeteria, it's in the halls, it's in the library, it's in the free time. That's where they connect, especially at the high school. Our little children at Hurlbut and the intermediate school are never left roaming around. Now, that doesn't mean that SROs and other officers haven't gone in and done educational programs and things like that, but it's kind of a different environment of the way that they, that they connect, I would say, with the students and being able to, you know, students have free periods, you walk by John's office, the kids are in there. You walk every day, well, I was in the cafeteria today, John was in there talking to the kids. There's that kind of ability where that kind of flexibility doesn't lend itself at the elementary schools as much. And at the middle school, we find, you know, he's out at recess, correct? He's in the cafeteria, it's the same thing. So most of these programs are at the middle and the high school. We're fortunate to be able to assign them the auxiliary duties, like, you know, they'll go right over to Hurlbut, they know which school, when to go over, and everything else. And it works very well, again, because of our location, proximity, and all that. I don't know if, Chief, you want to add anything, if I might have missed something? Please feel free.
You were right on the access to the SROs with smaller children, or some of them. So that's why we concentrate on the high school. You know, a six-year-old isn't going to wander into the SRO office and, I don't know what an issue, because like you said, they're with a teacher. So that's why the program is kind of designed for me. We get it in the high school first, because of that, and then we migrate it into the middle school.
But it's also one of the, from my understanding, the SRO program is basically to keep their ear to the ground and to work hand in hand with Dr. Edwards and her group in identifying students that could potentially be risks from the inside, right?
Do you participate with these officers SRO on for assessments?
Correct. Right. And since the threat for the two upper schools is from the inside, not the outside, the SRO program is absolutely key at the two upper schools. So I just wanted to clarify that for the community, so everybody understands why the resources are placed the way that they are.
Yeah, no, point well taken. And, you know, there is experience when I was principal, okay, we're going over to a house, and Officer McGowan and I got in the car, drove over, and it was school avoidance, like, come on. And I said, I'm not leaving this porch until you get in the car. You're too important, you got to be in school. I knew the kid really well, but that's what our, you know, our staff does as well. And the SRO is very helpful with that, and checking in and that kind of stuff. It's a tremendous resource. And I get very frustrated when I hear people that don't really understand how we use it in Weston, from bigger cities or different, you know, oh, well, we're getting rid of the police in the school now. It's so different than the way they use them in the cities that it's, it's a gift, what we have here with these, with these people. Oh, and James Wiltsey was a former SRO.
Just one quick thing, I think it'd be really helpful if the Chief or the Sergeant can just kind of talk about the response to Hurlbut and WIS, because we always talked about that term, keep the fight outside, which is, if I understand correctly, the threat at the lower level typically comes from the outside, unfortunately. It's that parent caught up in a custody battle or whatever. So I think it would be really helpful, just so the community knew, what does a response look like if something were to happen at WIS or Hurlbut? I've heard a story that you drove a cruiser across the grass, I don't know if that's urban legend or true, but I think it would be helpful to hear about that.
Want me to explain what it looks like?
Yeah.
Well, it's, I mean, it depends on how it comes in. Sometimes the staff will call, sometimes the security will call, sometimes one call. Our proximity, again, I've been at most of those during, it's during the day during the week, now, I watch the kids on the playground. But when we have the SROs on the campus, the mile of safety, they're there even before I, Lisa mentioned that, but the other day, I think there were five officers there, there, they're very drawn out. So I don't think you can get any better than that. I think it's what you're explaining, David, is those small, those lower schools, we are even closer to that high school or the middle school. And purposely, that's where the SROs are, the high school, physically in the school, where we're right next to, including the mile of safety officers. And I have them on strategic areas during the day. We know when the recess occurs at the schools and the lower schools, officers are prepared of that, and they're available in the area. Whether there's an emergency or not, they're there.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's really helpful to just kind of get a lay of like, what, if something were to happen, what the response is? And also, if I understand correctly, if there was something happening at WIS or Hurlbut, you got, you come in from, I guess, the south, and the two SROs, if needed...
We're resourceful, we have four-wheel drive, we don't necessarily go on the road. We have a layout from the library, you know, these cars are over on the grass, it's literally a few feet away from us. These cars are parked in the parking lots, literally a few feet away from the rear playground there. So...
Thank you.
I have to say, as a town, well, first of all, I've spoken to quite a few peers who are on other boards of education throughout Fairfield County. And when we talk about security and I explain to them the setup of our campus, every single, and explain the basics of our security, without obviously going into too much detail, every single one of them is like, you guys are so lucky, what a great setup. And so we really are fortunate to have the proximity and keep watching those kids on the playground, will you please?
You have yours?
Chief, since you're here, and I know that last time you were here, no one sort of really asked, engaged you so much and asked you questions, I want to make sure this is, this is obviously time well spent for you, and look, everyone appreciates you being here, I certainly do. Just for comparative purposes, just on the SRO, on the SRO, let's say, deployment strategy, for comparative purposes, if you look at the surrounding towns or the towns in Connecticut in general, is there anyone that uses SROs in, you know, lower schools, other than, let's say, the high school, the middle school? And are those special circumstances?
It's not normal, but there are schools, and the elementary school. See that? It's just a decision of the town, you know, in Weston, I have 15 police officers.
Yeah.
And three of them on the campus. I mean, if you look at it in that regard, I don't think there's very many of them more than that. But it's, it's not that they're not used to the elementary school, but when you have a limited number, there's also been schools that are taking the SROs out of schools because of severe understaffing of the police department. Schools in this area, police officers account, a dozen or so officers, bigger counts, and the Chief has to make a tough decision, he's got to patrol the town, too. And then he's redeployed the SRO, so he gets numbers back up to the position, and assign
Could you also, I had a question just about the, about the third-party assessments, third-party audits, I know there's been a lot of discussion on that. I know, I know we've done those, I believe ourselves, on an annual basis. Could you talk a little bit about, and look, I think it's, you know, we're still going to discuss this, and, you know, look, I personally think, you know, a third-party audit would probably be helpful, but I do want to discuss it and speak to you, and of course, the new Director of Security. The question for you is just, you know, for parents, let's say, and for members of the board here who aren't aware, what, what have those, let's say, internal audits look like? I suppose you do them on an annual basis. Who's a part of those? What is the outcome there? If you can just describe the process a little bit.
I mean, we do them annually, it's, it can be informal, we do them all through the year, too. If we see an issue, we bring it up instantly to the schools, if we find something occurring during the year. You know, it's funny, people have asked me if there's an event around the country, shooting at a school in another state, Chief, is there something now that, you know, we're not doing? And my answer is no. I'm not concerned that we have to have these, you know, instant meetings, because we're doing everything. We review them constantly, the plans, we look at our vulnerabilities. The board itself said that these things evolve, right? And we have to react to them. And that's what makes it easy for me to sleep at night, because that's what we do here in Weston. We go through with, you know, physical security, we talk to Mike, we talk to the school administrators, we talk to the superintendent, we make recommendations, which we've done over the years, the school board has been very good at implementing those recommendations. We were lucky, Captain Brodacki had some advanced training in that, but we have officers, Sergeant Mazzelli here today, as someone mentioned, he's my emergency management director, he has advanced training in some of these same issues that involve the schools with security. He goes to regional meetings for emergency management, talks to other directors of security in the area. So those are the type, those are the type of things.
Was there, was there ever a time that, I'm assuming we did, maybe not, but was there ever a time where we did have a third-party audit? And when was the most recent?
It was before, maybe the Sergeant can speak to it, it was before, I've been here seven years as the Chief, and it was before... It was before, I'd been here seven years as the chief, and it was before I became chief, so.
Joe, was there? There was. I believe it was shortly after Sandy Hook. We did have a group of professionals come in and do a comprehensive assessment of the district and the buildings and operations going on. And there were some changes and modifications to policy and procedure as far as what we were doing back then. At the time, I was the emergency management director. I was still just a patrol officer. I wasn't too involved at the higher levels of it. But I did sit in on the initial meetings. There, I believe there were retired agents from the Secret Service that had come in and provided the district with a report on that. And, you know, every year, we update the school's safety and security plans. Andrew Golly does a great job of getting them out to all of our stakeholders in town, the fire chief, EMS chief, police chief, emergency management director. We do review the safety and security policies, including our reunification plan. I was in, at the high school, one of the school's safety and security meetings, and we were actually just talking about exercising some of the components of the plan related to reunification. So this is an ongoing evaluation of what's going on in the district. Like the chief said, I, at the time, did the Homeland Security Comprehensive Assessment Module Training and have been involved with that. We do work with the Connecticut School Safety and Security Initiative that's located in WestCon. They have resources, they're constantly putting on training, and they can actually come in and assist with this. But I also think we're kind of getting a freebie here. You know, you're bringing in Lieutenant Wiltsey with a wealth of knowledge and the certifications, and he's going to come in day one, and he's already looking to do this. So we're, the fact that he hasn't been here, we're almost, in effect, getting a third-party evaluation from day one, which I think will be helpful, because he's done the homework to review some of these meetings and starting to understand what the concerns of the community and the board are. So I think, in essence, we're kind of getting a free third-party evaluation of our district's security measures.
And just as a last follow-up here, do you believe, so, for comparative purposes, so when you're looking around other districts, and Steve mentioned, you know, we compare ourselves for better for worse to Westport. Westport, other surrounding towns, are they doing third-party audits? And how often are they doing them, if they are? Do you guys know, just in generally speaking, when you're talking to your peers in those towns? Are they engaging in those on an annual basis?
I do not. I don't know of any local districts that are doing that on their own.
I don't know, you know, I go to regional police chief meetings, and I haven't heard of that. I mean, I think they have done them, but I don't think it's yearly. I think they follow up on recommendations they might have gotten from a third-party consultant. But I echo what Joe just said, is you're getting someone here that's going to be, in de facto, a consultant with the education and experience in the subject matter and not familiar with, you know, the Weston Public Schools. He's going to get a fresh set, he will be a fresh set of eyes on what we do here and how we do it. And each district and each police department is so different, it's hard to compare apples to apples, because it's so different. If you're a police chief in a town that doesn't have all the schools in one area, like Westport, they're kind of clumped together, you can't do what we do here, you know? You could do some other things, maybe increase your officers in those areas, which I think they've done recently down in Westport. But they're so different, you know, for the reasons you have stated before. Us being all in a row here just makes it so much simpler for us to do.
Is there anything that was, that was not mentioned tonight that you would say, "Wow, there should be a priority giving to X, Y, or Z that was not mentioned"? Or was not, or you did not feel like it was prioritized, let's say, in the presentation?
No, I think you're on the right track. I think the board's on the right track of what you explained tonight. It's a coherent strategy to move forward, to keep it reactive to the changes that happen in the society and the threats that come in. I think, like I said, I sleep pretty well at night, knowing we do what we do. Other chiefs are very jealous of what we have here. When I explain, you know, like per capita, three officers, it sounds, doesn't sound like a lot. We only have 15, so, and I have 20 square miles to patrol. And believe it or not, I have other things to do, except for, you know, being on the school campus in Weston. So it's always, you know, balancing the resources. I think we do it really well here. Like Steve said, this town's been very generous, you know, supplying anything we need, the mile of safety, the first SRO, and then the second SRO. It just goes to show you, the evolution of, you know, the security is always looked at and it's dealt with here in Weston. So it's not stagnant.
Thanks, Chief.
Great.
I wanted to add one thing with the mile of safety. It's almost having a third SRO. What that mile of safety officer does by going into the school buildings and walking around, they're not scheduled times, so he's consistently inconsistent. It's part of the method to the madness here. And you'll see our patrols coming through campus at varying hours. So we kind of layer our approach to law enforcement presence on the campus. As the chief said, he comes up here and has lunch. I come through the day that the panic button went off. Principal Fowler, I think, was pretty shocked when there was like six officers in her lobby. In about 30 seconds, she didn't even know what had happened yet because of the way the alert button went out on the radio. So we know, we get it. The schools are our most important industry. We are 100% committed, from the law enforcement's perspective, to providing every layer of safety we can. So it's little things. You know, when they first discussed putting the window film on, we actually took it a step further. I made a request with the glazing company back, I think this was in 2012, whenever that was. And we had exact replicas of our windows made, and we had the different types of film placed on it. And we took it down to, at the time, we had our own firearms range, and we discharged firearms at the different windows, and then we did breakout tests. So we actually timed how long it would take to gain access through the window based on each level of film, and made a recommendation. More than just what we're seeing, we went hands-on and took it to the next level and provided, you know, firsthand data and information for the boards to make the appropriate decision for what's best for resource allocation to provide the highest level of safety. So I, I mean, I'm pretty confident saying when this is the safest district in Connecticut. I feel, I believe that in my heart.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. That was great. Great. Great start. Great start. Let's move on to new business. Gifts and grants and requests, Lisa?
Yes, we have a few gifts that we just need you to accept. The first is, sorry. We'd like to thank the Weston Intermediate School PTO that will be giving, it's for $1,000 of inspirational vinyl decals. And we would ask you to accept that.
Questions? David?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve a donation from the WISs PTO in the amount of $1,100 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
The next one is for Hurlbut Elementary School. Oh, and I would be remiss to say, Ms. Catus, we hope you're feeling better. She is watching us on the movie. She very graciously did not feel well, and I said, "Yes, please stay home. We don't need all of the principals getting sick the week before vacation." So this is for our Dash robots for the Hurlbut Maker Space, which has really turned into such a beautiful space there. Ms. Radko requested this. And these robots are used for coding specifically. So if you could please accept that.
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve a donation from the HES PTO in the amount of $1,100 as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye.
The next one for the high school, I believe was already purchased. It was some flip pads, I think it was already purchased. It was a nominal amount, so we don't really need you to accept it. But again, we thank all of our PTOs. They are so generous with all that they, that they do for the, for the children of the district and supporting the staff with resources. The next item is the non-discrimination first read. This is a community non-discrimination. We did the non-discrimination student, we did the non-discrimination staff. And lo and behold, we discovered there's a community non-discrimination. Also, first, full, with full transparency. So it basically mirrors the other two. So we're bringing this one for a first read. You did the other two for a first read. And then in January, we'd like to bring Wright, Sharon, all three back for the second read, because it's all sort of the same thing. It's a non-discrimination, and if you feel about within the community discrimination, harassment, the process. So I don't know if there are any preliminary questions. I think we talked a lot about the questions with the staff one, and it's pretty similar.
I just have one question on this as it relates to the process.
Sure.
Looks like the language has been amended from prior reads, where we now state that it's either Director of Pupil Personnel Services or Human Resources. Do we have to choose, or is that dependent on?
It's dependent.
It's dependent on whether it's a student or staff?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
It depends.
Right. Yeah, makes sense. Okay. Thanks, Jody.
Great. So moving along with the agenda, discussion and approval of consent agenda. This is actually, should also be a district update. We want to make sure that we hear about HR as well. So if you could take us through Ms. Gavoni, the agenda, consent agenda, please? And then we do have to vote on it. I always forget that piece. I'm not going to forget it today.
It's a short consent agenda for the month of December. We have a few new hires, notably, as we've spoken about this evening. We're welcoming James Wiltsey as our Director of Safety and Security. That position will be effective at the beginning of February. We do have a couple of key positions that are vacant in the district or are soon to be vacant, including our Curriculum Instructional Leader for Language Arts 612. That position is posted. If you know someone who would like to be a curriculum instructional leader, we are still open, we are still welcoming applications as well as a special education teacher at the high school. And in addition, I will note, as was announced at last month's meeting, Superintendent Barbiero has decided to retire. At a special meeting of the board in early December, the board appointed themselves the committee to find a replacement. And we have a request for proposals out at this time for a search firm to assist us in that process. That is all that I have, if you have any questions.
Move that the Weston Board of Education accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Is there more to say about the superintendent's search than you just mentioned? The board, the full board will be the search committee. Julie is going to head up, has put out the RFP. What's the timing of that?
So we're expecting proposals to come back just after the new year. And we'll take a look in early January and see where we are and make some decisions coming from there.
And it's a national search?
It will be a national search. And whoever the firm will be will assist us in the process of soliciting feedback from both our staff and the community in terms of what they're looking for in their next leader.
Terrific. Questions?
Yeah, so that means that we, we're going to keep the committee as it is with the board members, but we will be soliciting, we will be having conversations with the community and with the teachers' unions and teachers, et cetera, as to... Focus groups? Are we having focus groups, then?
The consulting firm will do that on our behalf, and they will come back and present the information to the committee.
Okay.
So you won't be directly involved, but certainly that information will come to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
District updates?
Superintendent Report. Very busy month. Stay tuned, our December monthly update will be coming out. And I certainly hope that everyone has a wonderful holiday break. Pupil Personnel Services, oh, Dr. Edwards.
Thank you. Thank you for all of the nice comments in today's meeting. I appreciate it. I just have two very quick updates for PPS tonight. I think in the last meeting, I explained to you that we had a lovely parent meeting that we were unable to record due to some technology issues. So my assistant directors were kind enough to do it again with me. And the recording is now on the website, if any families were unable to view it. It's all about RCT-SED's IEP system, specifically how to access information in the parent portal, which continues to be kind of a learning curve for all of us. So I think it's, it's helpful if people need a roadmap about how that works. And then I was listening to positions in the district. Just a heads up, we will be posting for extended school year, probably by the time we come back for our next Board of Education meeting. So if you know of special education teachers, related service providers who are interested in working with us over the summer, we start that process early. So send them my way.
I'd like to put you on the spot. I want you to talk for, very briefly, about your dissertation, because you, you did some incredible work here in the district.
Yes. So I could talk about this for hours. I will not. I will say that I am indebted truly to the PPS Department in general, but especially at Hurlbut and Weston Intermediate School. I actually, I did an improvement science dissertation, which is a long-winded way of saying I implemented an intervention around the performance of special education students on high-stakes testing, related specifically to teacher mindset. And I had 15 volunteers who went through the entire process with me. I literally could not have completed my dissertation without them. I think we did some really exciting work that I look forward to expanding, not only within PPS, but, but kind of district-wide. So thank you to all of them and to the district for supporting this endeavor for me. It was, was challenging and excited that it's completed, so.
We're very proud of you.
Phil?
Quick update. Good news. And we've made a slight improvement to our projected deficit for, as of June 30th. So as of the period ended November 30th, we have reduced our deficit by $94,000. This is primarily driven by a reduction that we have in transportation needs for athletics. Just going back, we had increased that budget line a few years ago. Based on where we are right now with the stabilization of staff and with first student, we're somewhat confident that we will not need those funds for the remainder of this fiscal year. In addition to that, we have had some other, some, some reduction in anticipated needs for tuition. And this is primarily because of time and of placement for various students. We have had some positive revenue offset. We have a pre-K tuition, which is better than budget, primarily driven by the increase in the most recent tuition increase. And we also will be receiving, we plan, we hope to receive, more money for reimbursement for the town as it relates to their portion of cost, cost reimbursement for maintenance of our town fields. We are, we're also seeing a downward reduction in non-resident tuition, primarily driven by, I think we have two less students, one full-page student and one partial-page student. So it's good news. We'll continue to monitor where we are. As it relates to whether it be a surplus or a deficit for the remainder of the school year, things will still, can be a little bit volatile. We are somewhat stable at this point, but we'll see what lies ahead for the new year.
Questions for Phil? Can I have a motion to approve the financial report, please? Financial update?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve the November 2024 financial update as presented.
A second? All those in favor? Aye. Committee reports? Communications, did they meet?
Nope, we didn't meet.
Cave?
Well, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education focuses on professional development. They have... development. They held, um, a, a leadership convention in November for board members and superintendents. And in December, they held, uh, a new board member workshop. I attended it. It was, uh, focused, um, on finance and policy. And, um, their focus for policy has been on cell phones. So they've been supporting many school districts on cell phones and we were, we are well ahead of, um, their support. They, uh, mentioned the anxious generation, which we've all already looked at. Um, and, um, they offer many workshops, um, to support new members. So, uh, that's all I have to say.
Great. CES?
So that's the Cooperative Education Services. We had our, uh, annual legislative breakfast. Lisa and I went. Uh, I always find it really interesting to have an opportunity to go out and meet other superintendents and see Lisa and other superintendents all interact. And I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
Um, no, it's, it's just very interesting. One of the themes that continues to be a theme is that the superintendents are talking to the, um, legislature about, um, special education and funding for special education and, um, unfunded mandates and the burden of proof and all of the things. And it's, um, very frustrating because it's the same theme again and again and again. And we really tried to make the point of there are children behind this, that something needs to be done, um, because these costs are exorbitant for the, uh, local education, uh, agency to be able to pay for them all. And they, the state needs to fully fund things and get on board to help because we were making the point, it's not just the cities, but it's also the small towns. Everybody, we're all in this together, like, uh, one of the gentlemen from Bridge Board said. And these funds are being, uh, diverted. We have to help. We, everyone wants to help these children, but the state needs to, uh, step up and start paying more to the municipalities.
Curriculum? David?
So at this month's, uh, curriculum, uh, meeting, we talked about, um, some of the general accountability requirements. We talked about the panorama survey. We talked about a really cool field trip, I think, that high schoolers are going on. And, um, the Max Sausel presentation. Is that kind of some of where we are?
We had a table, the panorama survey, community survey data for next month because we had already exceeded our timeframe. Um, so that is still to come for January.
Yeah, uh, here's a couple of updates. So, uh, we're going to, uh, cancel this upcoming Friday's meeting because it's a real compressed day here on campus. But we'll return back to our key work in January. And in mid-January, we'll have two key inputs. Uh, one will be from Colliers about structural engineering. And the second, if, uh, you happen to see, uh, Chairman of Finance's, uh, Mike Ember's letter in Weston today about the timing for debt capacity discussions for mid-January. So they're both converging onto a, what will be an interesting discussion for us, uh, later in January. But the work continues. Uh, I've been looking at flexible energy for the next campus configuration. So I continue that work. And I actually revisited some work that we did early, uh, in the EOC in late December 2022 about some interesting security ways and interesting, uh, flexibility of security. So that, that clearly will come into the mix. And that, that wraps it up for the EOC for the next month.
Uh, Finance and Operations Committee, you heard Phil's report. Mike, uh, last week told us the buildings are warm and, and dry. So I think, uh, I think we're good there. Uh, the Negotiation Committee, there's nothing active at this time. Safety and security hasn't met and we've heard quite a bit about it tonight. Policy, Sharon?
Yeah, we, um, well, you've, we've taken the policies forward. So you've had your first read on some of these policies. Other policies are second reads for tonight meeting, tonight's meeting. I think we are looking to address the civility policy, um, uh, in our next, uh, meeting. And, uh, yeah, that's pretty much it. End of the year.
And WEF?
Uh, WEF, yes. Uh, WEF is actually in the midst of their fundraising right now. So if anybody here got a letter in town for WEF, they're doing their big, uh, fundraising push, please give generously. It's a wonderful, a wonderful organization that likes to help the community, this educational community here. And, um, they are also trying to determine what their spring fundraiser is going to be. So they're, they're all about fundraising right now.
And the last item, uh, on the agenda is, I guess, it's just a schedule of our next meetings, of which it's rather extensive. We're going to go into the budget starting in January.
Steve, I have one, sorry, one last update that I was just reminded of for policy. And that is that we are looking to do, we're looking to move our policies online. Um, they are online right now, but we're looking to put it basically in a searchable database. So we're looking at a third party that's going to help us, a very modestly priced third party that's going to help us out with that. Sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
No, no, no worries. So, uh, so next month's going to be very busy. Uh, it's the beginning of the budget season. Be a number of meetings, um, some during the day, some at night.
January 6th is the presentation.
Yep. So, um, you know, this is the most important part of the year for us to, uh, to work on. So, there you go. Anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Joe, Ed, Dawn, thanks for...